Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Today is September 12th, 2022. This is our regular monthly board meetings. If you'd like to welcome everyone here tonight that has come out for this meeting. We always start our meetings off with a prayer and a pledge. And I think tonight Commissioner Allison's gonna do the prayer and Commissioner Vaughn's gonna do the pledge. So Commissioner Allison, if you would please rise.
Hello, sir. Dear God, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We just ask for your guidance and direction and where we need to go for the county and ask you just to keep a hedge of protection around our county and keep everyone safe and keep everyone healthy. We just ask you to be over our meeting tonight and be with each speaker in Jesus' name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are your motion approved immediately?
So, eight seconds.
Second. On the second, on paper, say aye.
Aye.
You have a vote. Hear approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if we could add under old business items ENF, being a cell phone power easement and a broadband update, please.
Let Mr. Chairman make a motion. We approve the agenda with the two items added by Mr. Wood.
Second. Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in paper, say aye. Okay. First on the agenda tonight, under appointments, we've got Parks and Recreation program update. We've got Mr. Chad Marsh here with Chad, the podium is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, sir, it's a pleasure to be in front of the board, members of the board, our Mr. County Manager, Mayor Clerk, appreciate the opportunity. Mr. Chair, if the police board, sir, I'd like to take just a moment and recognize I have some members of my staff and women tonight. I just want to take just a moment because, you know, I think sometimes it is really easy to think about a public entity or even a company as just a big faceless group and Parks Recreation certainly not one of those. And to use a naval term, the captain is only good as his crew. And so I could not do anything without a couple very special people who I believe did Lord put in in my life and on my staff. Mr. Aitlin Kazee, Mr. Austin Andrews, Mr. Eric Taylor, and Mr. James Tyke are with me tonight.
Will they speak to?
Yes, sir. Dylan, please say. Mrs. Lisa Paget, who's my assistant, and Mr. Greg Barksdale, and Ms. Pam Forchy, who operate the shooting range for us all, I'd also recognize them, Mr. Chair. Sir, I have given the board a very lengthy packet. I don't intend on belaboring anybody in the audience or you with all of the details. But I wanted to provide for each of you a snapshot of what it is that we have been incredibly blessed to be able to accomplish in the first 15 months of my tenure as Director of Parks and Recreation. And again, I won't go into all the numbers and all the things, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of those and then really kind of segue into one of the things I'd like to speak about tonight, and that is our programs that we operate here within Parks and Recreation. And I want to make sure that I say before the board and as a voting county citizen, also want to let the other citizens in the county know that when it comes to programs at Parks and Recreation, I can promise you a couple of things. And those are that everything that we try to do, we try to take a look from a standpoint of is it sustainable and is it equitable? Those are the first two things that we do for every program. You know, is it gonna improve the lives of our citizens? And so with the idea that if it's gonna be sustainable, it's gonna be able to be carried out for a long period of time, long after I'm gone and long after this board's changed hands, then to me, that says that that program is on the right track. And there have been many things, not just in Parks Recreation, but I'm sure that this board has considered that that's what you must do. You must create a sustainable program. Equitability is something that we wanted to try to improve. We want to try to make sure that the playing field, to use a term, is as fair as possible. And so we want to give everybody an opportunity to play. We want to give everybody an opportunity to compete. And we want to make sure that when, particularly when it comes to the youth in this county, that when they leave a field or a court, they leave feeling like they were able to come and be part of something greater. Not that they just came out there and got mashed 40 to nothing and went home and felt worse than they did before they came. And then also that we, as an organization, provide the necessary oversight to all the programs to make sure that they are being operated in accordance with state, county, and recreational guidelines that are placed for them. But that is my commitment to everything that we do. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, if the police board, sir, I'd like to present my plan for youth basketball in McDowell County going forward. It's also part of the packet. And there's a couple of things that I would like to highlight very briefly, and that is on the first page of your packet there, and just basically explaining to you that when we looked at the empirical data that was pulled from last year's events, in other words, to say that we took scores from every single game that was played last year, and we sit down and reviewed those, what we found was some pretty serious disparity. And it came in particular in two areas, and what I've given you there is the two groups that are termed our midget group, which is the second and third grade children, and then our Pee Wee groups, which is fourth and fifth grade children. And I just want to mention two quick things for you. And the top team for our eight and nine-year-old boys, which is our midget division, scored 337 points in an eight-game, excuse me, seven-game season. They only allowed 99. So it sounded like they had a really successful season, but it doesn't sound like it was too fun to play then if you're another eight- and nine-year-old little fella. And what we want to do going forward, again, with this in mind, is make sure we can find a way to level the playing field. When using example of our Pee Wee Boys, the top team scored 287 points, and they only gave up 61. So their margin of victory was 32 points for every single game. Those are average margin of victory. So again, when you look at McDowell County, and many of us who are all raised here in McDowell County understand that there are children who, one way or another, whose parents or guardians come up with the money for them to be able to come out and play a recreation sport. Some of these kids, as we know, come from some pretty awful environments and backgrounds. There's some tough things that our children are facing out there, notwithstanding the fact that we are all still trying to figure out how to navigate. So these kids come out to ball fields or gyms, in this particular case, and they have something to look forward to. They're excited about it, they've been practicing, been working hard, and they shouldn't hop in that car on the way home and feel like they did that for nothing and that wasn't any fun. They should come out there and feel like that was fun, this was enjoyable, and I can't wait to get back out there. So what I am proposing this year is a system that is not unlike that of many of the other counties around us, and that is for us to adopt an evaluation and draft system. I provided you my definition of both an evaluation and draft, but I want to say to you that it is not my intent, as the Director of Parks and Recreation and McDowell County native and a veteran, to diminish anybody's level of community pride. But it is my intention to improve everyone's level of county pride. And I want the citizens of McDowell County to begin to look at everything that Parks and Recreation does through the kaleidoscope, if it were, and say that that is something that we can be proud of because we are all trying to create better teams that are one day gonna be playing at West and East McDowell Middle School, and then hopefully one day as Titans at McDowell High School. That is what we are striving to do. And so I believe that the draft and evaluation system will do that. The evaluation system will take place on two different occasions. We are working with it. Let me just say this, that McDowell County Schools has been phenomenal with working with us, and then there's really, I don't know that I've been told no of anything that I've asked. They've been an incredible partner, and I appreciate everything that they have done. We're working with our wonderful athletic director, Mr. Joe Cash, to try to secure some facilities so that we can be able to have all of the children come on one day and participate. But again, I know the high school has many, many things going on, but we're trying to work with them to do that. And the idea is that these children will come and they will perform in four different areas, dribbling, passing, shooting, and rebounding. And we're not gonna take a child who's a kindergartner, first grade, and make them come out there and do that. They're gonna forego the evaluation, and they're gonna be put into a pool, and they're gonna be drafted by their teams from their districts. The evaluations are gonna be so that children from second grade up through those who are going out into that middle school age groups will have a chance to perform one of those four skills, and then will receive a numerical number, a numerical grade, from five to one, five being the highest and one being the lowest. No child should, or if I'm able to help it, will know their score. My job is not to make that child feel worse about their skill. My job is to try to help them get better so that they're able to showcase that skill at some point for us all. So we're gonna make sure that those kids get evaluated. Who's gonna evaluate them? Those who have volunteered to be a coach or some of my staff members. And we're gonna evaluate it. We're gonna take that piece of paper, then we're gonna go behind a closed door. Now, in that closed doors, we're gonna do our draft session. And in that room will be coaches from two of our districts. We're gonna divide the county, just like it is for middle school, into an east and west district. So if you were gonna go to East McDowell Middle School, you'll be in the east district. If you're gonna go to West McDowell Middle School, you'll be in the west district. We are encouraging each one of our coaches to try to make sure that they reach out to parents after the draft and contact them and find out, are there any special needs? Do you have issues with getting to and from practice? Can we help you facilitate those? I'm not saying that our coaches are gonna be shutters, but what I am saying is that we want to encourage our coaches to get to know those parents so that we can create good relationships and make them feel like, you know, somebody's caring and trying to help their child out. So that when that draft occurs, that coach is gonna sit down from the east and west district and see that pool of players. And we're gonna do it totally random so that if Commissioner Brown was gonna be a coach and Commissioner Allison was gonna be a coach, we would have each one of their names in a hat, and this would be drawn out by somebody who has no skin in the game, and it would be taken out and say, now, you're first, sir, you're first, ma'am, you're next, and then that's how you would choose. You're able to choose that young boy or young girl with a five next to their name. But if it's more important to you to have a certain child from a certain community on your team, you may choose them. Just understand that if you start getting whooped by some of these other teams, we try to level the playing field, we try to help you. It's up to you now as a coach to make sure you bring up some of those skills to help them out. At the end of the draft, all the coaches will go and they'll contact each one of their children for their teams, and then we will begin our seasons. We have gone out to each one of the area directors in our county, and there are, as you know, there are eight communities, and we have spoken, large communities, and we have spoken with each one of the area directors who run the youth programs for those counties. And since I've been the Director of Parks and Recreation the last 15 nights, I want to tell you that the relationship that we have been able to establish with those area directors has been phenomenal. And I've made no secret about the fact that we were able to recover over $25,000 from these different groups that went back into McDowell County Parks and Recreation Youth Force to support all of our programs. These men and women have done a great job in not only carrying the banner from their community, but in also making sure that what we're doing at Parks and Recreation is supported by them. And then we will begin to play games throughout the county. It is absolutely imperative that I say to you that what we have seen over the last couple of weeks has been incredibly important from the community to reach out to us and say, we have concerns here, we have concerns there. And I can tell you absolutely that my staff and I have answered with courtesy and care every phone call and email that we have received. But I will not now, nor will I ever in the future, respond to a negative comment on social media. If someone has something that they would like to discuss with me or my staff, we will absolutely address it. If it's something that we have done egregiously or needs to be corrected and they posted on social media, I promise you, we will respond, and I will make sure the county manager knows our response. But I will not get into a verbal offication on Facebook. I think it besmirches me and my position. Sir, that is my report.
That was a very good report, Chad. I just want to say on behalf of our board that you're doing a phenomenal job with Parks and Recreation. We appreciate the good work. There's two things you touched on that are, I'll let everyone speak, but two things that were very important to me. One, the fact that every child gets an opportunity to play.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that. We certainly don't want to leave anyone behind and not let everyone have an opportunity to play. And secondly, you're even in the playing field for everybody. And so this will take away the, I guess, the idea that one school or one team has the best team always, and it puts it on more even playing field when you're doing this draft. So that puts, you use the term number fives on every team rather than three fives on one team and four, or nine twos on another. So I like that. I like that idea.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate that.
I do have a question about the grading the participants. Let's say I have a handicapped child and I want him to play.
Yes, sir.
And I understand that he's handicapped and understand that much likely he's gonna be a one or a two.
Yes, sir.
At his best. I do want to, what is the plan as far as talking, obviously you'll be talking with the parents.
Yes, sir.
And making sure that, you're trying to make sure that the teams are as balanced as possible, just so that, but we need to be sensitive to, and let's say, let's say it's my child, so with all child, all children. And we did want to encourage it so that they can become Titans. So the second thing I've got is the social media. Anytime that you're dealing with government in any fashion, school, school board, county commissioner, or employee of the city or county or whatever, there, people do have the freedom to speak their mind. And from my perspective, there have been positive comments, there have been negative comments on me specifically. And I can let that bother me, but I want to encourage you and your department, all departments with the county, if there is a legitimate right, that we want to encourage people to call you or call Mr. Wood to try to work on the issues, to try to make it better so that it is better for our county. If they don't have the heart to give you a call, they do have that freedom of speech, but if they don't have the heart to call, it's just fluff. So I do want to make sure that you understand that you and your department, your employees are doing excellent job, and we do all recognize that. And from my perspective, the comments that I have been verbally told have all been very positive.
Yes, sir.
So I just want you to understand that sometimes you do have to, you may be aware of negatives, but again, it's fluff until they call you. And if you can't do anything about it, then it may be time to ask us, what can we do to help this out?
Yes, sir.
And we will support you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sir, can I address one before you pass it? I want to tell you a quick one. This actually, but here to remind, last year we had a child, it was a young boy, whose mother contacted us and said he has autism on a higher scale, and he wants to be part of the team, but he has good days and bad days. And I don't know that he'll be able to muster up, her words were courage, to be able to play. That little boy sat on the bench whenever he showed up, and he wore jersey. Mom said he wore jersey to school quite often, too. And so I can promise you that we'll never turn a child away.
The children do take pride, and the families take pride in it when you can work on it.
Absolutely.
And that's honorable.
We'll make sure we do that, sir.
We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Chad, you've done an outstanding job. You've assembled a really great team back there in the back, and you laid this program out. You answer any questions when people have them.
Yes, sir.
And I fully support it, and you made the statement that you're not doing anything that's not different from what other county Parks and Rec departments are doing around us. So you also made a statement that it was total bust and it was not good, you go back.
That's right, sir.
So listen, I think it's time to give you the opportunity to move forward with this and see what great things you can do with this, too, like you've done with everything else you touched.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
100% behind you. I hate to see a child that is kind of out of his place in a team, and he gets to show up and just sit on the bench when he wanted to play or was physically able to play. It kind of just crushes their little feelings. And then later in life, they don't want to play anything, don't want to be a part of anything because they're afraid they'll be a bench sitter yet again. So I appreciate how you're doing this and the reasons why, and I appreciate what you're doing for the children of our county.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chad, I just want to say I appreciate you and your staff, all your hard work. We talk quite often.
Yes, sir.
And you have our full support in everything you're doing. I think it's the right direction for the county Parks and Rec system to go. And I also appreciate, June of last year, we spoke about adult softball.
Yes, sir.
And we have that program going, first season in a decade.
Yes, sir.
So it's very exciting to be out there, the atmosphere out there, just having a good time.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, we appreciate, Mr. Marsh, thank you for all you and your team have done, and we support you 100%.
Thank you, sir.
I do want to add, too, Chad, we believe that my daughter has got Ms. Kazee as her teacher, and so she's really, tell your wife that my daughter loves her class and her teacher.
We're lucky to get her up here from Salisbury. They're a great package, and we're happy to have you. Yes, sir.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Home Consortium public hearing, and so I'd like to at this time declare us in the public hearing pursuant to the state statute. And I don't have that number, but anyway, so we are in public hearing, and we have with us here today, Mr. James Ayers.
Well, he's coming out of, I'll just mention briefly, this is a hearing for HUD, Home Consortium, that we're honored to participate in with some of our peers and local government to talk about. And just to remind folks, this is a, I'm gonna give him and the staff there a tremendous amount of credit, because I know he's not gonna do that. There's been staff transition at what is now Foothills Regional Commission, and the Todd's been passed and things like that. And so James has done a great job of working on this with the staff he's got there and corralling it and persisting when we've had some pushback from federal folks. So he'll cover the details, but I want to make sure I give credit where it's due before he gets out of here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh, for the kind words. And, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm really, really excited to be here. This, I also, though, before we get started, I'd like to give kudos, tip my hat, to this board because McDowell County is taking a leadership role in addressing a tough issue, affordable housing. We're hearing it over and over and over throughout the region, impacts families, people, businesses, et cetera, and your leadership role is much appreciated. So tonight, what we're talking about is, the big word is a Foothills Home Consortium, and the purpose of that, it's intended to address the affordable housing shortage here in our region. Now, McDowell County is a lead entity, of course, but as Mr. Wood noted, there are also other participating, some municipalities and the other counties within the four county region here. I'm really excited, though, for Foothills Regional Commission to also be supporting this effort. So we're your administrative entity for this consortium. And we also took the lead in the development of, they call it the Consolidated Plan. And what that is, it's a five-year plan supplemented every year so we can do, take actions against that plan. And that's required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, before they will release the funds to the county here. Now, one of the things we like about the, what we were hearing is we engaged with members of the public, stakeholders, providers, real estate folks, officials, et cetera. There's really one overarching goal of this consortium, and that is to provide safe and affordable housing for low to moderate income persons and special needs populations across the region. Well, in order for us to achieve that goal, we need also need to specify the objectives. So the plan, the Consolidated Plan we mentioned, actually goes and lists some of our early objectives here, and some of them may be obvious. Number one, of course, increase the supply of new rental and homeownership housing stock. You know, we can't put people in houses or help them with their rent if we don't have the houses to begin with. And we see that, we see that throughout. Number two is to preserve and rehabilitate the existing housing stock. You know, some of the best affordable housing is where you're just keeping folks in their homes that they already live in. Number three is to provide homeownership and rental assistance. There are times where being able to provide that assistance can make a difference between a family being able to live here and work here. And last but not least, we also want to provide housing for special needs populations as well. And that, and so we may have gone through the hundreds of pages of the report there, that's also important, not just to the plan, but also to HUD. Now, given that, I don't want to take too much time because of purpose here now, the main action of the board tonight, of course, the public hearing is open. So the purpose tonight is just to hold the public hearing because we want to make sure that we hear feedback from members of the community. And as that's part of the plan, we will address that before the final submission to HUD in the coming days. Of course, we want to hear the voices of the community. We will make sure they're heard, and we will make sure that they're responded to within the plan so we can make sure we've heard every voice that wants to be part of this. I want to thank you for your leadership and also thank for you for your consideration here this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone on the right side that would like to make a comment or ask a question to Mr. Ayers? Anyone on the left? Okay. Any comments from the commissioners?
Yes, I was going, but hold a county portion of the contribution to matching funds. What is the plan on the county? It is for rental and it is for homeownership. Would we be getting our money back at that point, through that point, or what would it be?
Yes, actually, we're working on that. So right now, we've got an allocation, an appropriation from Department of Housing and Urban Development that's planned. So that is, it's $815,000, 652. So, but HUD talks about a 20% match. We've approached a nonprofit organization to a system providing that 20% match so that there's not a burden on the local governments as they propose projects for development, and we try to get, we go to get them implemented. So the nice thing is, even though the funds will flow through the county as products are identified and funded, that we take those dollars and build houses, build whatever those housing units look like, that way, we're gonna try and get as close to 100% funding as possible. And we've made some good progress because it's already been considered by the trust that we approached about several months ago.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman had a conversation today with the citizens just concerning this topic, and we're glad that HUD has appropriated that money from McDowell County or the consortium, and we look forward to our people being helped in a great way and rehabbing, taking houses resurfacing and rehabbing it. People like their houses that they live in, most time they don't want to move, and helping those people out is good. We're thrilled to be a part of it.
We've got a lot going on right now here in McDowell County, as you mentioned, you know, not just, and we welcome the HUD program for lower-income people, and we've got a lot going on for middle income in, you know, every area. So we welcome you with open arms. One else. Thank you, sir, for being with us.
I make a motion to go out and public hearing.
Second. Motion second. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
You have a vote. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, item C, Skills USA Recreation. We've got Mr. William Keller and Barrett Peters here with us today to give some presentations, I think, so if you guys will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, county manager, clerk, everyone. First, I want to recognize a couple of people's presence. I missed somebody. If I missed somebody, I want to apologize. Our CTE director, Ms. Mary Finley, our McDowell Technical Community College president, Dr. Mary, and our, also from McDowell Tech, our EMS coordinator of EMS programs, I guess is Rachel Eugene Edwards, and also our CTE coordinator.
Sessie.
CTE Brandon Hensley. Did I miss anybody that might have been here? Okay. I appreciate them coming to support our students tonight. Tonight, there's a couple of things that, and you'll see, we will talk about something just a little bit different, but we have the privilege of being able to have an EMT class in high school. I think we're about third or fourth one in the entire state to actually offer that course. And every year, of course, most of you on this board know that I'm not, I'm not real competitive, okay? So, no pun intended, but on April the 29th, 2022, the team of EMT class captain Autumn Sloan and Lieutenant Cheyenne Kelly at McDowell High School placed first in the Skills USA North Carolina Championships in Emergency Medical Technician Competition. The Skills USA North Carolina Championships held in Greensboro, North Carolina, took place April the 27th through the 29th at the Greensboro Coliseum and Aquari Convention Center. The conference was the largest showcase of career technical education in North Carolina with more than fifteen hundred outstanding career and technical education students competing in over one hundred and twenty hands-on trade, technical, and leadership contests. These contests span more than ninety-five trade areas, from construction, automotive, welding, drafting, public safety, culinary, cosmetology, just to name a few. During the state competition, Captain Sloan and Lieutenant Kelly worked against the clock and other teams, providing their expertise in their chosen EMT occupation. All contests were run with the help of industry, trade associations, and technical experts and test competencies that were set by industry. I think you have most of this information in your packet, and I won't spend a lot of time reading there, because I want to go on to recognize the ones that we're here to recognize tonight. But also, in the state competition, as said earlier, the skills competition was held in Greensboro the 27th through the 29th, and consisted of three days of events with over fifteen hundred skills contestants. Day one consisted of a resume submission, a two-hundred-question FISDA, and that stands for Field Internship Student Acquisition Project Written Exam, where students have four hours to compete, and then an orientation period with the competition coordinator. This allowed the students time to ask questions and to look over the equipment that would be used on day two of the event. Day two, the main event, is where teams competed, where career interviews, four skill stations consisted of medical scenario, trauma scenario, cardiac arrest, and airway management scenarios. Then day three, the skills award day recognition. Captain Sloan, Lieutenant Kelly placed first in the state competition and would be representing their class, their school, their county, their state, in the entire eastern part of the United States in Atlanta. One of the things that was said when our students competed, of course, when they came out, there was a little mistake made, and I kind of chewed on them a little bit, and they turned around and walked away from me, and it wasn't less than five minutes that I had one of the evaluators contact me and said, "Have you left?" I said, "No, I haven't." I said, "The students are here." She said, "Well, there was no doubt that when they walked into that competition, who they were and who they represented." They said absolutely one hundred percent performance when they walked out, from professionalism through their walking in, shaking hands, looking the evaluator in the eye, and she said, "I knew they had to be your students." I said, "That's just the kind of, that's the kind of students we produce in McDowell High." So, the big thing, the national competition, we're going to win the first place, and that was our sixth year in a row. We did not compete last year because it was virtual, the students did not want to do that, year before it was canceled, so we placed first in the entire state six years in succession. So they come after us when we go to skills. We walk in and they said, "That's the ones, that's them," and so they know who we are. But the big, I'll kind of say, the main event is the national competition was held in Atlanta, Georgia, June the 20th through the 25th, and consisted of five days of events with over six thousand contestants. Prior to arrival at nationals, students had to electronically submit their resumes, take another test, fifty questions, Professional Development Skills USA Framework Test. Day one consisted of traveling to Atlanta, it's always fun, and hotel check-ins, which lasted forever, and a North Carolina delegation meeting that lasted about two hours that evening with all the North Carolina contestants, advisors, and skills administration. Day two, orientation, contest chair and coordinator, seventy-five question test, another test, here we go. And so they're testing the knowledge, because you're dealing with human life. Day three, they were given a day to review and have some time, and prepare for the self-relaxation before the big competition day. Day four, competition day, consisted of four skill stations that did not include the two tests, resume or the equipment check. And there was a list of equipment, we were laughing earlier, and they said, "What is this?" I said, "This is a list of equipment we need." And Commissioner Allison said, "Can we get it for two?" I said, "Sure, two thousand dollars will cover everything we've got up here." We were kidding back and forth a little bit, but we had to take equipment, they provided equipment for us. They competed in stations consisting of CPR, hemorrhage control, long bone mobilization, O2 delivery, and suction with a bag valve, with bag valve mask and O2 suction, and in medical or trauma scenario. And day five, of course, is the grand finale of the nationals. This showcases the entire week of events at skills, with students recognized in gold, silver, and bronze. This is a nerve-wracking time for the students and their advisors. I'm proud to say, your McDowell County, state, and national contestants, Captain Autumn Sloan and Lieutenant Cheyenne Kelly placed fifth in the nation in EMT competition. They placed in the top five percent in the nation. That is a great accomplishment. There were only four competitions, and EMT being one of those, that North Carolina skills contestants finished in the top five percent, and we were one of those in the nation. So I'm proud Lieutenant Cheyenne Kelly and Captain Autumn Sloan. I'd like to recognize them, bring them up front of the board, if they would step up. They don't want to get up. Ms. Finley, you have anything you want to say, or Eugene, Dr. Mary? And the cooperation with the county school system and McDowell Tech, these students are able to get credit for high school and college credit for their two-year degree, so we've made a lot of strides in the last nine years. This is Captain Autumn Sloan, Lieutenant Cheyenne Kelly.
It's certainly my honor, on behalf of the board as well, to have the privilege to present you with these awards that were given to us. Cheyenne Kelly and Autumn Sloan, Autumn and Cheyenne, says, "National competitor awarded to Cheyenne Kelly and Autumn Sloan, McDowell High School, Marion, North Carolina, Emergency Medical Technician Demonstration 2022 for outstanding achievement in state Skills USA competition, rising participation in the National Skills USA Championship." Let's give them a hand. Let's go. Let's go. Now, we're going to turn the floor over to Mr. William Keller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. It's no secret, during my time as the Director of Emergency Services and as the EMS Director, I've been a huge supporter, and I'm all in when it comes to internships and our partnership with the Public Safety Academy and McDowell Tech. This is how I started. Director Carol Himpel gave me the opportunity, it was an unofficial internship, there was, we didn't have opportunities at McDowell High School, NCT, NCT when I came through in the late 90s for the EMT program. But that's how I started, and I'm all in. And we're all in at McDowell EMS, so much that we're training these Autumn and Cheyenne just like we would train a new employee who's been hired full-time. When they complete high school, they're ready to go, they're ready to be hired as full-time employees. We've taken it a step further to cross-training, or currently in cross-training in our 901 Center, to be able to work prior to advancing into EMS. I couldn't be more proud of this program, these students, the partnership with McDowell Tech, and we say consistently, partnerships matter, and it reflects, we see all the bad news that's always in the headlines, but there is so much good that goes on in the CTE programs, Director Finley, and the school system. It's amazing what comes out. We may not reap all of the benefits, but you look at the law enforcement, all the way down through all the other trades and industry that they're supporting, and it is one of the keys to improving our workforce pipeline. And once again, fifth in the nation, first in the state, I have the privilege and pleasure of getting to see them interact with our employees and their preceptors, and I'm also really proud of the preceptors of EMS that train them and take care of them, that look after them, and show them the way, pave the path for them. But seeing them in action, seeing them interacting on scenes, seeing them develop the qualities that we think are important and that we live by daily of treating people with compassion. Healthcare may be changing, but we're committed to making sure that we don't lose that personal touch, and I'm proud to see them carry on that tradition. So, on behalf of our entire agency, I'm all smiles tonight, and I can't thank their parents enough, their family enough, Chief McPeters at the high school, and I will tell you, he was one of my preceptors. We'll tell his age here, but he trained me, I couldn't be more happy of the opportunity that Director Himpel and EMS gave me when I came through high school, and it's a privilege to be able to turn around and get to see these folks have that same type of opportunity. And so, once again, I'm all smiles and I'm all in, and we look forward to having them full-time at EMS once they interact with us.
We are very proud of your partnership, we're very proud of these girls, that's quite an achievement, and you honor us by doing that, and we're very, very proud of you. We appreciate all of you, and Barry Peters and all of the other staff, Mr. Mary, McDowell High, anybody that's played a part of this, we thank you tonight for that. And I did want to say this, you know, and Barry, and David will back me up on this, you know, we were up in Washington DC where there's a hundred different commissioners, you know, came in for the meaning that we had up there, and when you talk to other commissioners, one of the first things from other areas in the state, one of the first things they're going to bring up is our EMS program. This EMS program has been created by guys like you and Barry, it's non-statewide and it's non-national, and we are honored to have great people like you, and we are honored to see great young people coming behind you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't believe Eugene, Eugene was part of my training too. Tell his age too, we're in here.
Mr. Chairman, I would say, I want to add too, real quick, that congratulations, hats off, top out of six thousand, y'all two are rock stars, and I'm so glad that William has already offered you a contract to sign when you're able to sign that contract for a full-time employment. That's what makes our organization so great, the people that comprise that organization, and you've got two of the best in the nation right here, and I'll concur with the chairman on this comment, saying, "We are so proud, and y'all do a tremendous job, and we have the best in the nation right here." And I want to say one thing too, collaboration, the partnership pays off, because where else in the state can you go and find the instructor? Barry Peters doing an outstanding job, but you have a cost share on the salary between a community college and a school system, recognizing the importance of the CTE classes and what they're doing to provide needed jobs, because we're in a crisis hiring statewide, and these two coming on are going to fill the void, but we're getting the best in the nation to come in and join the team, and so we don't want y'all to go anywhere. Y'all stay right here. Had a conversation with a guy today, he said, "Why isn't our good people leave?" Well, here's two examples of two that's going to stay and retain. Y'all too.
And we're proud of their parents as well. Thank you very much for the time and effort, and, you know, it's genetic, it comes from parents. We appreciate y'all. All right, thank you. Meyer, we welcome you.
Thank you so much. It's certainly a pleasure to be here, and thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come and say hello. I'm Marshia Meyer, so I'll just take a few minutes just to tell you about myself. I'm born and raised in Virginia my whole life, spent a few years at Myrtle Beach, and man, I'm so happy to be back in the mountains here. This place is just beautiful. I moved here with my husband just about a few months ago, and we have two sons that are in college, so we're new in the nesters, so this is a whole bunch of transitions, but all good transitions, and again, I can be happy to be a part of this community. And we feel, as William was just saying, how important partnerships are. Certainly, we feel the same way. I mean, I've had such a great connection with Will, so many people are already in this community, and that's what I really hope you get from this presentation that I want to talk to you about today, is that Mission Hospital McDowell is certainly an important part of this community, and our goal is to make sure that we're always improving the health and community and wellness of our, of the people that live here in McDowell. So again, I'm super excited to be here. Just a little bit about our system, because I like to say that it's a system, you know, we're a part, you know, Mission Hospital McDowell is a part of this community, and we came into this community around 1908, and look what we've evolved into. And being a part of our company that's large, you know, what I'm really proud of is the things that we can do and leverage our scale to really help us through things, some of the crises that our country has faced over the past couple of years, particularly with COVID. But just to kind of talk to you about our system, when we say system here in western North Carolina, so Mission Hospital McDowell, we're part of the North Carolina Division of Mission Health and HCA, so there's four acute care, there's two acute care hospitals, and the other four in our area are critical access hospitals, as you can see, Angel, Highlands, Transylvania, Blue Ridge. And across our system, of course, we have about twelve hundred licensed beds, we are employing about ten thousand five hundred employees across the western North Carolina region. Forty-one hundred babies have been delivered, and that is just over the past year, and right here at McDowell, we've delivered right around four hundred here at McDowell Hospital. And what we're really proud of too is our innovation around telehealth, which really became across the forefront of COVID, and we know that patients couldn't always go to see their provider, and we really had to become innovative. So right now, we're seeing about forty thousand telehealth encounters a year across our system, and it's really helping to provide access to people that can't normally maybe go to Asheville, or go or come here to see a specialist, and so we've really done a great job around that. And then as we're kind of going into, I just wanted just to give you an idea of our impact, and this is just 2021 across our system, so our system has provided fifty-three million in state taxes for North Carolina. Around one billion of that is right here in McDowell County is what McDowell Hospital has contributed. A hundred and sixty-eight million dollars since 2019 in our capital investments, and some of those investments you can see there on the right, that we're really excited about, is our about is our transportation system, particularly around our helicopter and our transport system. We've also invested heavily into our equipment, particularly around surgery. We placed a lot of linear accelerators, which is around innovative cancer treatments, robotics. And then around financial assistance, because not everybody has full coverage or there may be high copays or they can't pay their bills. We've assisted in paying $277 million in financial assistance. And right around $18 million of that was right here in McDowell for those families in paying their outstanding bills. And our payable and what we're contributing to the families as far as workers, $814 million in payable and benefits in just 2021. So very, very proud and excited about that. And then just kind of going into more about what we do here in our community, each year about $750,000 we're spending going as we pick what's important around our charitable donations. Just what we feel is really important. We have that ability to look at what's, each of our communities, what we feel is going to be important and how we want to be there. And we're excited to be at the Mountain Glory Festival, for instance, next month. We're also very excited to be a part of a lot of our other Healthy Living Community Programs and interregional events. But also, not only just here locally, but across western North Carolina, we have what's called a HOPE Fund where our employees contribute to disaster relief. And in fact, just locally, $35,000 we contributed to families that were impacted from the tropical storm Fred that affected western North Carolina. So very excited about that. And as we were talking about workforce, we certainly are very focused on workforce. So I wanted to give you guys an idea of really what we're focused on around retaining and recruiting our important staff, such as our RNs. So we have 225 star RNs, which really means these are graduate RNs. And what we do is we put them on what's really a residency program when they get out of school, so that they are much more prepared when they are solo, out on the floors, to feel confident in what they do. So that's been a very effective program for us to help retain those nurses so they don't feel so overwhelmed when they come out of school and all of a sudden are taking care of really critically ill patients. And then also around that pipeline is so important too, around our education. We're actually funding three full-time faculty members across our region at our three nursing schools at AV Tech, Western, and Blue Ridge. And then our company has just recently purchased over the past, I guess maybe three years, the Galen College of Nursing. And I think by the end of this year, we'll have 16 schools across our company, across the nation. But here locally, we are very excited about the new campus here in Asheville. And that's going to be really important for us to invest in that pipeline for nursing as well. It's going to offer three different programs, levels of programs for our students to get into the profession of nursing. And then, so going across that, we're really excited that last week, we were able to announce across our western North Carolina Division that we've invested $22 million in compensation increases that actually went into effect this past Sunday. And then we targeted those positions such as staff RNs, critical care RNs, and many of the very critical support departments, such as our environmental services, our respiratory therapy services, a lot of our physical therapy impacted, Echo Tech, a lot of these supporting departments also were impacted. So we really want to be that leading healthcare provider that's going to help retain the talent and also attract that talent so that we can provide the best care at the bedside. So, because as you know, it's just been a huge challenge across our whole nation since the pandemic to attract and retain and to get those nurses to come into our hospitals. So we're very excited to be able to announce that last week. We've been having these conversations with our staff over the past week and it's been really, really positive. So we know that that's going to be really important for here and in our community. And also around what's happening here locally, as you can see in that last slide, super excited about our expansion that's going on. I don't know if you've been up to Mission Hospital McDowell, but it is going to be a construction site for a while. It's going to be great progress for us. We started about a month ago breaking ground on our two-story tower expansion. Now, this tower can go up further floors for future expansion, but it is going to add additional bed capacity for us that we desperately need.
What's total bed, we're over there just now, what's total bed capacity current?
So right now, we have 25 universal beds. When I say universal, those type beds, that they can swing between ICU level care to intermediate care to med first care. And then we have five labor and delivery areas. And so, this is going to add another additional 11. We do continue to plan to expand further out to our licensed bed capacity. So, yeah, so this will be under construction until September of '23. But again, it's a big progress. It's already a beautiful facility. Super proud to be a part of that. And again, thank you so much for taking a moment and let me come present to you guys today.
We certainly appreciate the investment that Mission Health has made to the county. We thank you for that. Appreciate that. And on another note, you know, with this expansion and growth, you know, maybe you can, I've got a daughter that's a nurse practitioner in Charlotte and a granddaughter that's studying to be a doctor. So maybe you can bring those guys on the team. I would really like to see them come home.
Yeah, it's a very profession to get into now. If you want to be a nurse practitioner or anything in healthcare, this is the time to do it.
This is personal, it's public knowledge, I guess, because you've got it in your bag. So you've got three dogs. What kind of dogs do you have? What breed?
They're all mutts. I have no doubt. I rescued them, probably let's call it All-American Mutt Rescue. But I think total weight of all three of them together is probably 25 pounds. So, yeah, we truly enjoy it. It's beautiful.
It's great to have you, Marsha. My father was on the commission board back in the 70s to get the hospital site and hospital built back when it was nonprofit. And then it sold, obviously. And we do greatly appreciate the tax and the expense and the giving, especially in helping train and stuff and bettering the healthcare of the people here in the county or whomever is using the hospitals. But it's going to be good working with you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Patrick went off the page though, that his dad is a doctor. He was a doctor.
He was a doctor here in the county for 44 years.
Oh, wonderful. That's awesome. All right, thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, under Item E, Item E is the CDVG Public Hearing. I declare this in the public hearing status. And I will turn it over to Mr. Williams.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, CDVG, we love acronyms in county government, local government, state government. It stands for a Community Development Block Grant. Some of you who don't know or have been paying attention, maybe have it, sometimes, usually that goes hand in hand, but not always, if you'll pardon my humor. We have not applied for a Community Development Block Grant in a very long time. Had to struggle to remember the last grant. I believe it was the Rock Ten Building Reuse Project a little less than 10 years ago. What we've got tonight, we are going to ask the Board in two weeks to authorize an application for Community Development Block Grant. So we're not asking for that permission tonight, but that's, as you know, and I've discussed with you, communicated with you, that is staff's intent to ask for that in a couple weeks. At this point, I will give an overview of the CDVG program. It's going to get a little more specific about what we're intending to do here, but there's still some to be determined on what the application is going to look like. And we will get more specific on our application on the September 26th meeting when we'll have that second hearing and we will ask for approval at that time. So if you will just bear with me, there's a little bit of a script that I have to go through just to share with the public what the program is about. And then if there's any questions or comments from the public, then of course we can go home. So again, the CDVG, the Community Development Block Grant, specifically this is under the Neighborhood Revitalization Program that has been unveiled by the North Carolina Department of Commerce. They are the recipient of CDVG funds from the federal government, being more specifically housing and urban development, which was referenced earlier by Mr. Ayers. So in North Carolina, CDVG Neighborhood Revitalization Funds can be used for a variety of different activities in support of the NC Department of Commerce's Rural Economic Development Division's three livability principles. One, to promote equitable, affordable housing. Two, to support existing communities. And three, value communities and neighborhoods. Eligible activities must meet at least one of the three CDVG national objectives to be eligible. One, they must benefit low and moderate income persons. Two, prevent or eliminate slums or blights. Or meet other community development needs that are deemed to be urgent because of existing conditions that pose a serious and medium threat to the health and welfare of the community and other financial resources that are not able to meet the need. In North Carolina, eligible activities include community revitalization, housing rehabilitation, scattered site housing, public facilities, housing development, and water and sewer connections to existing housing. This year's program, the state is making available $10 million, which sounds like a lot, but it does not. They are accepting maximum grant award, or awarding $950,000 of maximum grant awards. There's no minimum award amount. As I mentioned earlier, a separate public hearing will be held September 26th at our 11:30 meeting that day. We'll discuss the application further and ask the commissioners to approve the application. I will again mention what we're proposing for application, which I'm allowed to do that of course, is we are proposing to partner with Gateway Wellness Foundation on developing a housing rehabilitation program. So the numbers, we have not nailed down yet, but we hope to do as many rehabilitations as possible. So there will be some rehabilitations as well as emergency repairs. So they have been very successful for the last two, three years on urgent or emergency repairs. Going in a home, there might be a leak around the toilet, there might be a leak in the roof, maybe a minor electrical issue that they've been able to address. Volunteer labor funds, they've been to raise, those sorts of things. So we'd like to partner with them. So we're working right now to get an application with their assistance. So again, two weeks from now, we'll have more specifics on hopefully a number of households. We are going to ask to go for the full grant amount. And so, we'll have more details this year. Should be a public hearing notice within, I believe, Thursday's newspaper that hearing as well. At this point, we can have the regular public comment.
Does anybody on the right have any questions or comments? Anyone on the left? Okay, yes.
Thank you. I'm Kitty Goode Wilson. And the question that I have is can any of this money go toward a countywide minimum housing ordinance or a minimum housing requirement? Because sometimes you can go in, somebody says they need something done, but in order to bring that housing, house situation up to some kind of a standard, it may need more than what we thought about. But to my knowledge there, in the county, there isn't a minimum housing standard like there is in the city. So it has consideration, particularly for the remediation being given to that type of approach.
So if I'm hearing the question correctly, there, this would not address implementing a minimum housing code, that's what I asked you. That's not covered in this program. It's a separate policy question. There are, it is eligible to do housing renovation for people that qualify and they have to be low and moderate income, an income scale that qualifies for. And depending on if it is a rehabilitation project or emergency repair project, it really depends on what can be done in a household. There's a limit that is set by the program on how much can be spent in that particular home. And based on prior experience, sometimes rehabilitation can be very extensive, very expensive as well, that will go beyond what a state department will allow. So quickly answered your question.
Yes and no. Thank you for the explanation. I'm more concerned with if we don't have a minimum standard for the housing, how can a determination objectively be made on rehabilitating houses? It's just something that I think we should consider as citizens and as the commissioners of really taking a hard look at coming up with a minimum housing code for McDowell County.
One question, the time she's saying. So I know when you do, you're supposed to, when you do remodel, you've got to apply for a permit, correct? Because well, certain things that might be electrical or plumbing or something like that. So would some of that kick in to try to take in what she's saying back there, that there's, there's at least something, but not on the scale that she's talking about. But we want to make sure there's some way to protect those people that's currently maybe in place to some degree. Would that come into play here? Just a question.
If you're asking if the work would require a permit, that would depend, but if they're doing things that fall under the building code for required permit, there is a standard of what would be accomplished with this funding. If it's an emergency repair, it's not going to go in and do everything that might be wrong with that house. It's going to go after what's causing the most critical issues to that home. If it's a hole in the floor, for example, or the roof, they're going to focus specifically on that based on the amount of funding that might be available per household.
Is it really like a point system, like a grid?
Right. And we'll get more into that in the next hearing, but there is essentially a graded scale on severity, I guess. It has to be someone that is deserving by income, but also when you're looking at a limited pool of dollars, how are you going to prioritize this person over another one? So the good news here with partnering with Gateway, they don't want to, they want to help out. They want to be a partner here. This is a lot of money that can do a lot of good, but they want to stay in the space. So hopefully we get this, again, knock on wood, but they want to keep applying and working to get urgent repair funds or other funding that might come along to address some of these pressing needs that are out there, that are very common unfortunately and do exist for a lot of our folk.
I think it's something we need to certainly revisit and talk about. There needs to be policies and standards.
Yeah, because y'all, the only thing you're doing by doing this is protecting people. Hey, listen, you would hope that every, we'll just start with vendors. You would hope that every landlord would be responsible and maintain properties that they would want to live in, is how I look at it. So I do my, but that's not, that's not what happens in reality. And so, that is something we might need to look at to just make sure something, minimum out there to make sure people aren't being taken advantage of and protected. We're here to promote, protect, and serve our people. So I've got no issue with the planning board taking a look at something like that.
I think we need to send that to the planning board and then to look at it. Also, we need to probably sit down and do some talking. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions or comments?
Make motion without a public hearing.
Motion in a second. On the favor, any other discussion? On the favor, say aye. Aye, but thank you. Next on the agenda, Item F is the regional CTP presentation. And we have someone from the NC DOT here. Sir, we'll let you come up and introduce yourself.
Hi, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Board, thank you for having me present tonight. My name is Andy Bailey with the NC DOT Plantation Planning Division. And I have with me two folks from the division office, Hannah Cook, who's the division plan engineer. And you can make the money right in. engineer, and you can make the money, Randy, who is the money hand, who is the construction out of Indian York, answering any more operational questions than the things that are going on right now with projects. But I just want to quickly, I want to try very quickly but concisely to go over all of this for you. It's quite a lengthy presentation, but it is, what is a conference of transportation plan? What is the history here in the foothills region about this? Some of the major recommendations that are going on in McDowell County, and some minor recommendations as well, and consideration to adopt this CCP. And I'm supposing, do you have this in your agenda packet, I hope? Thank you. Page three, a CCP is a long-range, 25-year, multi-modal vision plan. It's acquired by state general statutes. It's a needs-based plan, it's based upon quantitative and qualitative analysis, land use plans, community and statewide goals, and steering committee and public input. It represents a community consensus of the future of the transportation system over the next 25 to 30 years. It's developed properly between the local governments, stakeholders, rural planning organizations, and that is the foothills rural planning organization that Mr. James Ayers was here just a second ago, and NC DOT. It evaluates multimodal transportation, that is highways, public transit, rail, bicycle and pedestrian, and also considers other modes such as freight. Where does this CCP fit into the long picture of NC DOT? We're at the very beginning. We identify the needs and we propose potential solutions to these needs. It then goes into a prioritization process, that is, it ranks based upon other state projects and local projects as well. If it's chosen for that, it gets put into the program development, that is, the statewide transportation improvement program. And then there's project planning, which includes minimizing environmental impacts, both human and natural, project design, right-of-way, construction, and maintenance. On page six, you'll see a very big graphic there about the whole history of this. We began this late 2019, like the work of it, and helped some initial means, developed a community vision, had a public survey that went out at that point. In 2020, while we were all on move out, we analyzed the system based upon base year, the future year, and also multi-modal considerations. We analyzed alternatives in late 2000, mid 2021 timeframe as a committee. We met to agree upon the draft plan and to complete the plan as a draft. And from now until the end of the year, we're going through both municipalities and counties in the three counties, foothills region, that is McDowell, Polk, and Rutherford, to go to those towns. I wanted to share that Old Ford and Marion have already adopted this plan as theirs, and endorsed it to be adopted by the board here. I also wanted to thank Mr. Wood for being a part of this process from the beginning. And if we flip over to the next page, we have a couple of maps, and I just want to quickly go over what these mean. Of course, we all know what freeways are with I-40. We also have in this plan what are considered boulevards, that is, of course, roads that have a median down the middle and that are usually two or more lanes in one direction, east direction. We also have major thoroughfares undivided, that's usually your five-lane sections, as well as major and minor thoroughfares that are indicated below, and major being state signed routes, and minor thoroughfares meaning usually local routes, local secondary routes. So this is the envision of if we were able to build everything today, this is what the transportation system would look like in McDowell County. How do we get there? We get there through what on page nine, the highway recommendations, which is a couple of maps, both for McDowell County as a whole, the Old Ford incident, and on the next page is Marion incident. I wanted to go over some of the major recommendations in this plan that again have been analyzed and detailed with the steering committee. Some of these are probably will be very familiar because we're not totally re-inventing the wheel on the previous McDowell County CTP that was done a few years ago. This is probably very consistent with that, maybe a couple of things in Marion that have changed a little bit, but beyond that, the majority of these have remained the same needs. Included in that are US 221 from NC 226 south all the way to Rutherford County. Rutherford County, by the way, also has that recommendation from the county line down to the Rutherford bypass, which is an obstruction.
What's the timeline for what you meant?
I believe, and I could ask, I could ask the people from the division more on that. I do know the one end of construction is the next, what, three years? Is that right? Three or four years?
The sections under construction, which is R-2233BB, roughed and bypassed, is completion date 2024.
And then the other one will not begin until after that's completed, if I'm not mistaken, in the schedule.
Currently, yes. There are two funded projects that along the corridor, the next outside of the one of construction. That's the next section of bypass, which has a right-of-way date, I believe, in 2025, and a construction date in 2027. And then R-204E, which is this section up here from 40 going south, or 221, that's actually in McDowell County. And the dates are either right-of-way for that project in 2025 and construction in 2028.
And that's funded?
That's funded. Those are the two pieces that have funding. The rest of the pieces of the corridor will go through prioritization to compete for funding.
How far from the McDowell with the product engineer? How much of that, that doesn't get all the way there? That's, that just starts our end?
Starts this end of the project, it picks up at 40 and goes to, I believe?
Goose Creek.
Goose Creek, yes. So that will be the first piece, and that has funding attached to it.
Can I ask you a quick one over here? We get the bridge, I-40, all the time, the bridge, and I'm so glad to see you've got a new company now hired, if not that one. That is a big thing in McDowell County, which you guys know about that. And what's the completion date for that? I mean, we saw.
For sure, you.
Yeah, you got any data for us from that?
Right now, the completion date is November of 2023. So we've made a lot of progress in the past two months after a year of not much progress at all. So we're glad to see that. And hopefully Ramp A, which would be the ramp that just closed, westbound off, will be opened up sometime for the middle of, I don't know, I can't remember the exact date, but that should be a short-term closure. If you drive by there, you'll see them, they did a lot in the past couple of days. I rode over on the way over here. But the completion date of the whole project is November of 2023.
Well, the biggest half of the bridge is so nice to ride over. People have commented, we're so thrilled to be able to ride over half the bridge, and so we're glad, we're glad we're riding on that, too. It's been a long time coming. Sorry, I just wanted to ask those two questions.
Thank you. I was going to try to interject a little bit after. So continuing on the list here, we have 226, which is from US 221 to 226A, where that splits off. That section's pretty narrow through there along the river and is to widen that road to 12-foot lanes and that turning lanes where needed. The next section, of course, is from that point all the way up the mountain to Mitchell County, is to where applicable and where practical, add some passing lanes up that road as it becomes, as it gets to be a very big thing for trucks and slower-moving traffic. US 70 from NC 8, NC 80 to McDowell Junior High School Road in Marion, wide mountain to four lanes. Sugar Hill Road from the aforementioned bridge down to Zion, Zion Hill Road is to widen that to four lanes. US 221 Business in Marion here, widen that to three lanes at the center of the turn lane from 226 up into pretty close to downtown at Georgia Avenue. And Bat Cave Road, which is over in the Old Ford area, it's to widen that from Old Ford Sugar Hill Road up to I-40, and have that turn lane there with some of their interstate traffic that comes off there.
One quick question. Out of those right there, none of the rest of those are funded other than what he said about the credit?
That's correct, sir, yes.
But these are on the plan and this is where we're going when funding's available?
That's correct, and this is where, you know, you as the county will help, will work in concert with the foothills, our PO, to submit these to be scored and hopefully be financed.
And I'll go ahead and correction. We do have one project on the list. It's the next, the last bullet, US 221 Business, it's U-5835. That one is funded, that's to widen 221 Business going from 226 up to Georgia Avenue. Right-of-way date on that's 2023, construction 2025. We're in design currently on that project.
So those are the major wide lanes that we have with adding lanes to the pack capacity. Some of the other major recommendations that don't necessarily have capacity, but hopefully will help some of the safety and throughput of your drives, will be on US 221 from Thomas Creek Road north to D.C. Johnson Road, because there are some accidents along there, some head-ons along there, just to add a median, pretty much in the rural section as you head north, especially just north of 226 up to D.C. Johnson, just before you head up the mountain. US 221 Business, and this is the Marion project, so I do believe it's also funded, the five-to-four lane conversion. If it's not, it was at one point. Nets from New Street here in town out to US 70, you're heading out of town, is to include a side path on one side and bike lane on the other side. West Henderson Street, also the recommendation is similar, with reducing from four to three lanes for the center of the turn lane from 221 to Bergen Street here in downtown and adding bike and sidewalk. And the last one, the one that actually got the most discussion going on in this, in this in our steering committee, was improving traffic and transportation between US 221 Business and McDowell Junior High School Road along US 70 there, adding some traffic signal improvements, more like timing and things like that, intersection improvements, and other operational improvements along that area because of all the conflicting traffic that comes out of all of those businesses there.
Well, this, when you're making these proposals and recommendations, are you checking with the businesses, local businesses, to see if there's going to be any issues? Because I work at a place that has large repair for rock crushers, and sometimes we have trucks and trailers go out of there over 100 feet long, and we do utilize the intersection of the five-lane, if we're cutting that down to two lanes with a median, it's going, it could inhibit some of those trucks. And so just a question.
The question, a good question. I mean, we have all the steering committee, and they do know some of the business along there directly, no? But what I will say is that at this level, we're talking about, you know, we're talking about very high-level planning.
Sure.
When you get into more of the project specific, then those things come out about what needs to be made, what accommodations need to be made for different businesses.
So going back to the first page, looking at the Bat Cave out to Old Ford Sugar Hill could possibly require some red lights.
Correct, yes. That's correct. This is, this doesn't get quite into the traffic analysis of this, just beyond the capacity of the road and the things that we focus on. So those are the major recommendations, at least highway recommendations in the plan. I will note that we also have a lot of modernization. You'll see these in the cyan on the on-road maps. And these are modernization improvements that typically address substandard roadway design. Lots of the roads here in here are very narrow, and some of that does create some safety problems, especially intersections. So these are not, these kind of improvements consider inadequate lane widths, limited or no shoulders, paved or unpaved, and horizontal vertical alignments, especially as you round corners and run into intersections. So a lot of these recommendations are typically making sure we have some kind of a shoulder. And when I say shoulder, it doesn't mean paved, it means making sure we have some unpaved shoulder for recovery if people rear off the side of the road and be able to make it back on. So there's some modernization improvements that are listed in the next few pages. Also, intersection improvements, and there's really only one to speak of in this one, because the rest of them are addressed with other projects, for example, US 70. But they typically identify deficiencies, including high-frequency crash locations, traffic congestion, storage capacity issues at, you know, certain intersections, and other alignment issues. We have, you know, we have one of these as a specific project, but a lot of these are to be addressed with some of the linear projects that we've made recommendations for. And again, I'm glad you asked this question. Recommendations are made at this level, at the planning level. Project-specific analysis may render some more specific solutions as it goes on. So I got a few, there's a few pages about modernizations, and again, most of these are simply either adding a shoulder and/or widening the lanes as applicable and as able, as we're able to in the mountains. And I realize this, I grew up in mountains, I grew up in North Muckin County, so I'm very familiar with the limitations we have. Okay. Let me go to page 16. This is exciting, some of the public transportation and rail recommendations. One of the things in the not-so-recently-passed Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill was the study of a Amtrak route between Salisbury and Asheville. This has been something that's been in the books for 20-some years, actually, but it's actually been a new life with this infrastructure bill. And included in this is a train stop in Marion and also in Old Ford. So that's made, that's part of the recommendation for this. We also have a recommendation for, when practical, the resumption of a circular route around, a public transportation circular route around Marion, when that's applicable. And that may, that may come into some kind of a divertive, deviated fixed route where, you know, they run a long route, but people call and say, Kate, can you pick me up a block off there? And those are the type of things that can be done with transit service. I think I just kind of mentioned all that in the last couple of pages there. We also have numerous bicycle and pedestrian, and they're there for you on the maps regarding both the county as a whole, as well as the, as well as Marion, Marion and Old Ford. These come from several different plans. We've not chosen to reinvent the wheel, but simply take recommendations that have come out of other previous plans. These include the Isothermal, what used to be called Isothermal, now foothills, regional bike plan in 2018, the City of Marion Conference of Bike Plan in 2016, McDowell County Conference of Transportation Plan, which I said was done in 2013, Old Ford Conference Ped Plan done in 2011, as well as steering committee. So all of this, this information that you see on here, we have several colors to be a bit aware of. The dark brown are multimodal, micro-multimodal, so they're off, they're usually off the highway. They may be along the right-of-way, but they're off the highway. We also have the gold, which is the bicycle lanes, which again, issued into rural areas, these may or may not be practical, but based on the plan, we're identifying where people are cycling from, where there are opportunities. We also have the green, which is both a bike and a pedestrian facility. Think of the US, think of the US 221 Business project that's going to have that, where they have a sidewalk and a bike lane, you know, on the road. And then the last of which is the purple that you see there, and those are sidewalk projects on there. So this is where all this information comes from. Again, we're not going to try to, try to put something radical out there that's going to reinvent the wheel, but rather to stick with the previous plans that have been adopted by the various boards. Really quickly, there are some major cross-county multi-use pass, Fontiflora State Trail, which is basically from Muckin County to Burke County. There is a side path recommendation along US 70, which again, takes that traffic, takes that bike pit traffic off of the, off of the main road and puts it on to any more safe accommodation. And then the Marion Sprucevine Trail, which is from Mitchell County to the Peabody Rail Trail, which is south of Marion. And again, the biggest thing is on the big, high-traffic US 70s of the world, really try to get this, try to get those traffic types separated, so we don't have people either running into pedestrians or cyclists, or cyclists and pedestrians slowing up traffic. There are some major cross-county on-road bike recommendations, and these are mostly on lower. on lower, lower wiring facilities. I will say, there's a, there's one on US two-twenty-one from Burke County to North Main Street in Marion, that one might be re-explored with the design of US two-twenty-one. And there's also one between, on, from NC two-twenty-six from Bothell County down to, or up to the McDowell Technical Community College, which is good for folks that need to have those kind of, uh, multimodal options if they're not able to, to drive. And I've listed all these recommendations out in this, in, in these slides after this. Is there any questions before I ask the final, final question that I have?
The Amtrak route is of high interest because we're working on a train and trails festival for Old Ford, and it'd be really nice to, to be able to announce something next year, what we have next year regarding that, but there's no funding there, correct? Let's just hear again.
I believe there's funding, there's going to be one funding for a plan that's done at a much more specific level than we can do. I mean, we, we just basically identify the route that's north, southern and, and everything like that. There's, uh, by now the state and the NC OT Rail Division will be probably more apt to be able to give you more information about, uh, plan and a, a timeframe of implementation, if possible. And again, I, I think people are still unpacking the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill right now and don't quite know what is, what funding for Amtrak is available and if it's going to be flexible between, you know, different parts of the state or different parts of the country. It would, I mean, I would like to be able to tell you more about that, but unfortunately it's just something that's, there's a lot of money for Amtrak, a lot of money. A lot of that money is going to be for improving existing, um, existing railways, but also hopefully for some of the new extensions too. Okay.
I would say right now, the Rail Division is working on a pretty substantial feasibility study, and that will include, um, sort of background cost estimate that will support DOT pursuing a grant to, to get funding for that system, but right now it's at the feasibility study stage.
Any other questions? You can have the floor again.
Okay, and so the only action I have requested is, uh, the adoption of the Foothills CTP in McDowell County as presented.
Mr. Chairman, make much of it prove the regional CTP as presented.
Motion, and the second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Appreciate it, Mr. President.
Like you'll enjoy.
Yeah, no, I'd wear.
There you go.
They should be two and a half, right?
They should be, yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, we're going into old business, item A under old business is the building project, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Just a few items here, and we'll try to move on quickly. Some time ago, you asked staff to look into some of the long-range needs of our DSS buildings. Quick reminder again, we have one main building on East Court Street, which is what most people associate with that apartment. We also have the child support unit, which is in the, what is now called Services Building, uh, sixty East Court. And we also have Adult Services, which is out at the Mental Health Building, out of Spaulding Road. We're only still at the, um, understanding stage. We did reach out, as I've indicated, to the state and ask if there's any funding for studies, assistance, planning, et cetera, there's not. So if we get to the point where you would like to hire an architect to actually present a plan, study what is needed, et cetera, it would be on county dollar with no state participation. But just a square footage breakdown, the main building is sixteen thousand five hundred square feet. There on East Court Street, Adult Services is using about three thousand square feet of mental health, and Child Support is using about forty-five hundred square feet in the Services Building. So currently, we have about twenty-four thousand square feet that are being used, uh, are overused in some instances where we, especially the main building, where we have about fifteen offices that are shared. They're very cozy, as you have seen in the past. And so, uh, what we don't know without going to that next step is, uh, what are need might be, uh, long range. I can tell you it's more than twenty-four thousand if you put everyone under one roof, just based on current need and current usage. That does not factor into, um, the potential that Medicaid is expanded like we, we hear it might. That would require more determination staff. Again, our staff determine eligibility for Medicaid to quite a, a large degree and would undoubtedly require additional staff in our Economic Services Unit and does not account for future population growth as well. So I'm not comfortable putting a square footage number out there, but again, it's going to be higher than twenty-four thousand. So I could continue to bring back essentially facts, but if there's interest in going beyond to an actual recommendation of the building or what have you, I'm probably going to need a licensed professional to do that.
Mr. Wood, since that's a state function partial, is there state money available for construction or is in?
Yes, so there's not on the study part, you know, for analysis, but there is in construction. So roughly what, we understand and we've had conversations with the state, approximately, it's never going to be exactly fifty percent, but approximately fifty percent of a construction project would be paid toward with federal funding, which is passed through the state. So if you built a five million dollar building, you know, two-point-five of that would come back from federal government over time. So you would, again, going through a scenario, if you build a building for five million or ten or whatever, you would go, uh, you would take on all that debt, uh, you would get approved at that full level from the local government commission, but everyone would know going in that process that you would be getting half of that back over the length of the time that you're financing it, so.
And little payment, half the payment, this comes back monthly, would that be?
It comes back monthly, uh, essentially a filing, it's kind of fifteen seventy-one that we file to Raleigh, and we get monies back for administration things now. It would just add in that debt payment.
How many square feet is our new MS building?
It's about twenty-four thousand square feet.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll, I'll move it forward. I think that we need to have thorough analysis done and brought back to the board on projected space, projected, uh, solutions to our problem, because we cannot, I don't think we can continue to have double staff, uh, double, two people in one office in a small, in a small office. I don't think that's good for, um, the consumer, the user of the service and, and the employees too. So I think it's time we've got to, uh, direct staff at least to move forward and, and evaluate and start bringing back recommendations to us. I mean, if we can get half the money back, I know we've got to spend half to get half, but that makes it to be more feasible. And our ability to borrow money through the LGC, they would take that needed dollar amount for what we're going to use it for, that would be a priority, right? Because that would be a needed service. How would they look upon, would they be more favorable?
You're absolutely required to provide space, much like the courthouse project, you, you had no choice, even if you didn't want to, you had no choice to do that project because you're required to provide court space, you're required to provide the space for this, this function. So compared to some things, they might not look as favorably upon a DSS building, if you have the ability to pay it back. I mean, they're still going to look at that beyond everything else. You're going to have to pay back any debt, uh, but they're going to say, okay, well, they need a DSS building or what have you, but in this case.
How can we help you move it forward? Do you need, what, what should we do? Give us a recommendation.
I, I think a, a first step would be, um, seeking an architect, um, by way of requests or qualifications. And, um, much like we'll talk about in a minute, you can start off somewhat vague with an architect, but, um, and work, you know, select one based on qualifications and then, you know, get them on board, hear what you want to do, see what the need is, and then as they get started, you can, uh, go into a project development program.
Chairman, I'll make a question, will you allow staff to move forward with, uh, trying to select a architect and bring back the board to do this?
No motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion or comments?
On this right here, we could be looking at any other properties that the county owns to see if that would work, if it was for upfitting for that specifically. Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, Mr. Wood.
The next item I mentioned a second ago, we've had a, a selection process, I've talked about this, uh, prior meetings. For our Services Building, uh, we have received some state funding in the last year's budget to do some work, which you directed towards that building with the eventual goal of having probation for all and, uh, restoring in that building. So we have a proposal in your packet from a firm out of Hickory called CBSA. They have attached proposal, and right now it's set at an hourly rate until there would be an actual project. And so, once a project was identified, then it would switch to a fee-based, percentage-based, but until then it would be hourly. And we would keep our work minimized to, with that in mind, as to approve it.
Okay.
Can I make my question, will you approve that? I want to hear it through again.
We've got a motion. And a second, any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Uh, the next item is the old BMS Station One. I, I did have a question earlier from, uh, Mr. Walker, addressed that first on the demolition schedule, and he'd asked that building be, uh, removed for parking. I've asked Mr. Riddle, who's Public Services Director for us, to, uh, start selecting, demolition bids on that, and so we haven't started that process because of some of these , uh, items we've talked about now. So the fire pole and the generator, uh, we've talked about, will be saved from the building. We also have been asked by the Amateur Radio Club, Ham Radio Club, if we could donate, if you could donate the antennae that are on the roof to the organization. We have no usage for them, we're going to ask to approve that by resolution.
It's a pleasure, Board.
Make much of it approved by resolution, donating the equipment as directed by staff.
Second. Motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then lastly, thank you, on the capital-type items, uh, staff has been meeting and communicating with the engineer that is looking at our paved assets. We, and I did ask, uh, we have, we do not have yet the estimated delivery on that, uh, plant, but they are going to work in priority as the Garden Street parking lot to get that paid for. The plans, please.
Second.
Again, that's, we're at a line to Garden Street in the next couple of months.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question, it is, so the, uh, schedule, the, uh, firm that we hired to do the, uh, the evaluation, can you give us, because I didn't realize that it was as in-depth until today, I think the Board needs to hear why we've not gotten back that list yet, uh, what, and the priority, because it, it does matter.
It's more, and again, what, what you revisit what you did a couple of months ago, uh, we've hired an engineering firm that's going to do more than just essentially just give you a list of, let's drive by and look at it, it looks bad, let's put that first on the list. They're going to do, um, actual core sampling, uh, for parking lots. Hopefully, all of our lots were built properly back when they were originally developed. We have probably some that were not, and so they will go through and, uh, and understand all of those driveways, parking lots, et cetera, to come back with a thoughtful response and prioritization on how the county needs to address them. I'll be very upfront and clear, um, you guys set the priority on, on allocation of funds, but there's probably going to be a very long list, an expensive list of projects that we will need to work over time on. And that's the idea, uh, for them to come back with a schedule and what we can do based on budget over the next couple of years. And then, you know, they're going to look at like the parking lot out back here that was just, uh, I'm not going to recommend to do anything, but we need to understand, and Mr. Riddle understands this and agrees, that we don't need to forget about this out here either, or any of our newer assets, we need to be five years from now, you know, maybe sealing cracks and then ten or fifteen repaving. So that's some of the things we want to stay on top of with this sort of planning.
With the capital, um, project that you guys did for us, that would work very well when you're looking, when you're looking at budgeting processes, uh, so that, so, you know, as far as asphalt, is it going to last for ten years, is it going to last twenty years? It all depends on thickness and, you know, it was, so that's, that's going to be pretty good.
And it's right up Mr. Riddle's alley, because a lot of his background was in capital planning, and so it, it's very natural for him to have that, okay, what are we doing, uh, you know, next year, and here's a written plan, so that, that part is exciting.
All right, no action on that. Appreciate the update, Mr. Wood, and, uh, we'll move on now to item B, Parks and Recreation Project, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, and, uh, Mr. Marsh is here. We'll focus on the first one, uh, we did pass out, uh, so you have in front of you, it looks like this, it's a breakout on Recreation Center, uh, cost estimates, this was provided by Highland and Hammer of Tuva's, um, I guess around, uh, end of July, they came out early July and did some of this estimating. This looks a little bit different based on what I was originally presented. What you do not see is a grand total, um, but I'll do the math for you. What they presented was, uh, around nine-point-six million dollars, uh, for total, uh, revamping of the entire Recreation Center property. And so that included everything on this list without any sort of prioritization. And as you remember, we were awarded a little over four million dollars of state funding. And so we've got a, staff recommend prioritization, and so you've got our recommended prioritization schedule in front of you for what we're calling Phase One. We've talked from the beginning about doing some site design and, uh, improvement with our driveway and our parking, uh, that's covered in the six-fifty. Our swimming pool was built around nineteen eighty, it leaks, uh, quite a bit every year. Uh, we have to keep water, adding water in almost every day in the season. Recommended that be essentially dug out and replaced. Uh, there's a splash pad component, it's essentially, um, a pool deck with a, um, interactive feature for younger kids and others of limited mobility that can't get into the actual pool. And then, uh, the next.
No, the pool will have capabilities, ADA correct?
Yes, it'll have, uh, the required list to get into the pool, uh, but if parents don't want their children to actually get submerged in the pool, or they have any medical issues, it wouldn't allow it, this is something I could address that. And for any, anybody of any ability, uh, splash pad the city has is very, very popular. And so the next little category, kind of spaced out, is focused more on the field area. Uh, you see the press box concession, stadium seating, lighting, fencing, netting, backstop. The grand total for all three buckets, et cetera, associated with is a little over four million dollars. When you factor that in, plus the design fee permits and other things, it's sort of right about where our. where our state funding is. And so what we do not have in that state funding is enough resources to do renovation to the interior of the building. There's some great ideas that Mr. Marsh and the staff had. There's a building addition that would be wonderful to have. As you know, we have one program area in our building in addition to the gym. This would add a couple more spaces. And then an auditorium, which is a fancy word to say enclosed pool. There's not funding available for that. However, you know, as put on there, future phases, there are other opportunities, grants that are out there, other asks that can be made to state and federal folks for these perhaps. So I would recommend going with the Phase One, but not forgetting about the future phases and working towards a common, common with those in future years.
It's a pleasure, Board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go ahead and approve as presented Phase One and authorize staff to move forward with the project.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I would like, so can Mr. Chairman have our director come up and give some comment on it too?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. As was pointed out by the county manager, there's been a tremendous amount of discussions at by this, and I, we really feel like there's a lot of buzz. The county manager set up a tour, went down to Garden Way and toured their facility and looked at some of the, some of the facilities they had down there and turf in particular was what we were there to look at. Met with some other folks that the architect brought on board and gave us some ideas about some of the facility features. And I have absolutely no idea with the momentum that our programs have right now, being able to have something like that here in the heart of downtown Marion to represent McDowell County, it will be absolutely critical going forward and making all of our programs be incredibly successful. And one of the things that I think Vice Chair, as you showed, pointed around there, that is a multi-use field. And so not only are we going to be able to play softball and baseball there, but there's going to be a soccer element that's going to be over there. And, and we even talked about potentially having the ability to be able to do concerts, but have that stadium seating built into that area there. We already have that feature. It's going to be incredible, Mr. Chairman, to be able to move forward and certainly we're incredibly excited about it. 100% support as the county management is in the phase approach. We'll make do with what we've got there and we'll do the best we can to continue to make sure that we update him on our needs so that we, and pursue grants alike so that when funds do become available, we're ready to jump on those and to continue forward, sir.
Who knows, we might have a minor league ball team up there.
Be ready to go, sir.
Well, to chat about the success, the crazy, wild success of Little League this past year.
Unbelievable, sir.
What the merger host?
Yeah, well, the merger, you know, we took, you know, Little League as it exists here in the county and the organizations up the state, Big League Camps, some of the things they were doing out there, and then our fields here, put it together, ended up with 173% increase, which was in your package as well, for our Little League this year. And we had two district champion winning softball teams and one that will be hopefully coming before the board in November, a state winning Little League baseball team who went on to represent McDowell County and North Carolina in Virginia and actually won a ballgame and beat Florida. So we're very proud of them and we feel like it's a tremendous amount of momentum moving forward. So yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we feel like we can do some amazing things there with that field, so.
It's going to have food truck, three spots for food truck, hookups, I mean.
People are going to be able to go out there.
It's going to be, you know, as here's what it looks like.
It's going to be amazing. So bring the families out, sit down there, watch the ballgames, enjoy some of the things that are going on downtown, that downtown continues to grow. Certainly a big part of what you're doing here is the board wishes for that.
And one thing too, Mr. Marsh, has always been when basketball season kicks in, that gym's been utilized, you've got gymnastics going on at the same time, one way in and the same way out, that's a miracle to not have somebody ran over, backed over today. So that's really been needed. And the skate park that we're trying to work with the city to locate a spot for that, and of course, we're not being too successful currently, but anyway.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood.
I have one more on the Parks and Rec. I, you had asked or you had asked, you directed some time ago for staff to be preparing an area, the Maple Leaf Complex for a playground and picnic shelter area. We had applied for, I believe, at least two grants so far to make that enhancement and unfortunately both were unsuccessful. So we did go ahead on some site prep work. That purchase order has been signed and turned over to Mr. Marsh for that contractor to get going on the, the site prep. We are going to ask for your permission to apply for a grant through the NC Parks and Recreation Trustment Authority. This would allow for the development of the playground and picnic shelter area. And if we don't get this one, we, we might just have to move on and start just kind of phasing it in as well. But since opportunity was here, would like to ask.
What's the deadline of that grant? I mean, when will we know?
The deadline is November 1st and usually it's about a three month turnaround. So if we weren't to get this one, I think we would just roll in this.
Your motion would go ahead, you can go ahead on that. Second. Got a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Discussion is, I'll just say if we don't get this grant, we're, I'll make a motion to approve on it because we.
Been trying.
And I appreciate staff trying to get grants. That's always the way to go first, but we, we tried and tried and decided we're ready. We need to be ready for ball season when it kicks in next year.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Sir, local contractor broke ground today on that. It's been very good to do. That was it on Parks and Recreation, Mr. Wood, Water System Project.
I'll be quick, these are just updates. We're having some early, or it's late at this point, permitting work done on Phase One of the Nevo Water System Expansion. Again, this is around NC 126, none of the gent to Jack Corbin in that area. Phase Two, which you've authorized, is coming back towards Marion around Route Number 10 and associated roads. And that is only really just beginning now. We have received the official award notice for the Hoppy Tom Hollow Road Water Project. We have requests for qualifications for engineers. I believe it'll be in the paper then this week. So we'll be working on that. We have an ARC grant that's been submitted, probably about two months away from award on that one. An engineer is doing a study of water service expansion for the West Marion Elementary Area, asked for an update on that today and I'm still waiting on the timetable of that. I'll share that when I receive it. And two weeks from now, we'll ask for authorization on a grant to certain area around NC 126. So we'll talk about that more in two weeks. That's all the updates.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wood. Policy updates.
Yes, sir. You asked about two months ago, or direct, again, directed, directed nicely, that staff work on some policy review and specifically getting here tonight, we're, we are looking at our human resource personnel policy. I have had some questions over time and especially lately about the request to have a dress code or appearance standard. We do not have one, and so I wanted to make sure that full board supported that before we go off on that. I could vote probably if there's interest.
Certain interest on my part.
To have a dress code?
Yes, sir. Include it in the policy.
Yes, that's what we need to do. Is that, do we get a motion?
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion for that, have a dress code involved in that.
We've got a motion.
And we'll read by some language.
Yes.
And talk with HR Director, of course, and Mr. Cates probably.
Absolutely. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. We added item B, being the cell phone tower easement. Last month, you, I brought to you a request from Verizon Wireless, actually an agent working for them, to request a permanent easement on county property near the Ag Bar, near 226 South. You directed staff to negotiate fair price for that privilege of that easement. An offer was made of $500 a month in exchange for the easement, which was rejected by the company. Provided you a copy of the email. They have offered a $5,000 one-time payment for that easement. And if you would like to accept it or not, we'd gladly take your feedback.
And with that, just for clarification, if we choose to do 5,000, then they never put something up? Was that?
I think it would be contingent on the actual tower having an easement as not action upon, then I doubt they would probably make a payment.
Do you know the average cost of what easements are in going to sell towers?
It was suggested to us that we seek the amount that was sought, which was averaged out to about $500 a month, and that's what was rejected.
Now, if they use, if they keep that property tied up for 20 years, that's $20.84 a month.
I'll make a motion to reject it. So 5,000.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Would you like to offer up a counter? Part of your motion.
If the, if your data stated that we needed to ask for $500 a month, I think we need to stick to that.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not modifying the motion.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item S, Mr. Chairman, the broadband updates. Mr. Conley had shared a statewide press release and there is a press release coming from Spectrum within the next two, three days. But I did want to mention and provide to you the letter from NCDIT, the state agency. And so if Mike's listening at this point, the, the state funding that will be awarded to the company is a $4 million grant that has to be matched by the company. You had set aside $1 million of the ARPA allocation that's been made to McDowell County. Spectrum asked that $100,000 be applied towards this grant. And that was all, that was all they were interested in because they wanted to make the balance. So there, we will sign an agreement that you will have probably for you next month for that. To my understanding, that still means there's $900,000 still available for broadband.
True.
There is additional great grants that will be made. They're going to go back through, so every county applied, well, I'm sorry, 93 counties applied, every county that applied was given a grant, just to be fair and equitable. What they're doing now is going through all the other applications and they're just going on score. So there may be projects in Wade County that get awarded, even though that's the largest or second largest county in the state population wise. It's all based on score at this point. So we may get a second great grant or we may not. So after the great funds are expended, then they'll go to the CAD program, which is completing access to broadband. That is a $400 million pot of money. This was 350. The more challenging part for that one is it is a, it requires a higher match. So where this could be anything all the way down to zero would require a higher per dollar match. It's a 30% match at this point. So before it was zero essentially for counties, now it's 30%. And that's based on whatever the project definition would be. So it's only being rolled out now. So I've got a meeting tentatively scheduled with staff with this department to get more details on it, so.
How many, how many helps they think they could serve in that? Money that's been awarded now?
1,300, 1,343 is.
Is there any stipulation that they reach out instead of just in the maybe where they're already wired?
Say what, we don't have the mapping data yet, but they applied for specific areas to be served. And so as soon as we know, it'll be publicized on the maps state. So we'll make sure that's shared. They had, I couldn't share this data publicly before you had asked, I would have shown, but it was sporadic all around the county for Spectrum and for Optimum that also applied. But it's all over the county.
Do you need any action from us tonight, Mr. Wood?
Not tonight, but I will be definitely asking for future action on the CAD program.
Thank you very much. Next on the new business, item A, the Mitchell County Boundary Line, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Believe Mr. Walker was the only commissioner on the board when, and maybe Mr. Brown, when a prior board requested that the, the boundary line of Mitchell County be mapped. So it took about, about eight years for that to happen. It has happened. And so this is a state agency that they literally will go out and it's essentially a survey. So they will go out, they will go through backyards, they will go through the woods, whatever, actually map that line. And so we, we've had a meeting with our Mitchell County counterparts a couple of weeks ago. The easy part is for you to approve the line. There is no dissent or votes to that by resolution. The hard part is going to be for the assessors and the managers now to implement that line on where it might deviate from where the understanding was. The, the state may clear, and I will too, as my counterpart Mitchell has, this is the line. If you don't like the line, you have to go to the legislature. So that's what we communicate to our residents.
Now, they came to us, they came to us along about that time, I guess, most of you've been selling our property over there, didn't you?
Right, and that's separate from this. But from, from what both counties can tell, that there's no major impacts. There will be some changes for homeowners and property owners.
We had one house appealed during the appeal process and the house, it was being taxed, which this may still have to. Half the house was in Mitchell, half was in McDowell. And the gentleman appealed, I guess, and I know in our county, but I don't think they, their county was on the same cycle as far as the reevaluation. And that was a real mess.
It makes it a challenge, so this will help a little bit, but it'll still be a challenge. So we do have a resolution and once you, Mitchell County passed those last month, we can get started on the hard part.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the resolution excepting the map boundary lines as presented.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Next, item B, administrative items.
So there's a couple of these here, I'll just go over quickly. We have received state funding under the STRAP program to do stream clearing and some stabilization work to one of our flow control dams. And there's a contract from McGill. Would you like me to do these as a group?
We, we are certainly all aware of this.
You have your EMS write offs, you have a leak adjustment for Nevo Water, and you have project budget ordinances for Universal Industrial Park, Lord Sewer, Shooting Range, and there's two budget amendments. Be glad to dive into details on any of those.
On my part, you don't have to.
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative items as presented.
Second.
Along with the budget amendments too, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion or comment?
Mr. Chairman, one comment, that shooting range, so the paving of that road, the state appropriate wall painting, they, that's, that's quite narrow.
And they're, and they're going to, they're going to redo what was done wrong essentially at the same time, is that correct?
That was put in, that was two.
Yeah, they, they put the right kind of pavement in asphalt.
To my understanding, they're not removing what's there. This is just.
I thought they said that they were going to do that.
This is just paving the gravel portion.
Existing part that hasn't been.
The con, the, what was put down was what was spec.
Which was tennis court asphalt.
Right. So that is, that's an item that's on the radar, but it's not in this work. This is just to pave what was gravel. this is just to pave what was gravel, and so the state's aware, there were some concerns there, and so again, with that relationship with having the maintenance funds to come back, something that might have to be addressed in the future period.
And it is, and it is just to the parking area, it's not paving the parking area, is that correct, the debris did?
Right, just the driveway portion.
And just, just that for anybody who watched, could you remind the public, the dollar amount, the match, that's a 910?
That's right, sir.
Split, so our county, and the total project was 2.0.
2.7.
$7 million.
Yes.
And the only county money that we have in that project totaled now with this additional 10% match was what, roughly, just?
250,000.
Approximately. So, we spent $230,000 to get 2.4, and then whatever this new project, paper project costs.
It was stated recently that we spent 2.7 million dollars on it, which was not so, it was the state that spent the money on it. Okay. We need to, we need to get a, a motion.
Motion in second.
Yes, I do. All right, got a motion in second on that. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. Marion Fire Tax.
Thank you. You have before you some information provided by the City of Marion, just to remind folks that the county has a partnership to provide funding for the, what's called Marion area, which is a tax district around the city limits, and the relationship with the city and the city fire department there is half and half, to where half of the operating expenses are paid by the city, and half are paid by the area, being the residents and taxpayers in the district. And so, the city, with assistance from the county and advocacy from county commissioners as well, advocated for state funding for capital expenses for a fire truck. City took the lead on it, on that outreach, and I know some commissioners talked with the local delegation. The state was able to provide 500,000 for the purpose of going towards the fire truck purchase, which unfortunately, these days, is not paid for the entirety of the fire truck, and so the city does have the need, the fire department has a need for two trucks, they're both around the mid-90s, and they're vintage, 1990s, not many years old, 1990s.
One of the papers will need to work on one of them.
No longer is functional, so, and if you add the 500 to what the estimated cost would be, the total would be about 1.4 million, and so the city is suggesting to finance 900,000, which would cover the balance of the one truck and the full cost of the second one, and the debt would be covered by city taxpayers in the Marion area taxpayers. And so, the, the hope and the goal is that the growth in the tax base for the Marion area, which is your primary concern, that that would cover the debt payment for that financing period, and I'll, as a blanket reminder, if it does not, then you do have an obligation per your interlocal agreement to fund, if something else is necessary, so there's action.
Mr. Chairman, one thing too, they stated, the fact that they're on back order already, and then also the fact that the costs are going up just tremendously, and that's why the city was really encouraging us to lock it in as a partner with them. I do want to say, I appreciate our city, and Mr. Chairman, the mayor, and that city council are excellent to work with, we are fortunate, and a good group of men and women to be a partner with on many projects. I'll make a motion, go ahead and approve.
Go ahead, I was gonna make.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'll make a motion to do what was presented as far as letting the sales tax in, and we will back it up if the tax does not take care of.
Second. Motion in second, you have a discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Next, Mr. Wood, then through tax matters.
Thank you. These are mostly routine as presented, you do have some 10-year write-offs, we're not able to collect taxes over 10 years old.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the tax information matters as presented.
Second. Motion in second, you have a discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Wood. Next, under item E, Constitution Week Proclamation, Mr. Wood.
You have a proclamation for Constitution Week, which would start on September 17th and on the 23rd.
Make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second. In discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, may the board, on the youth commission, Mr. Wood.
Turnover to Ms. Craig. That's okay.
Okay.
So, I have two items, the first one is, we are still looking for applications for the library board of trustees, there is one vacancy at this time, so we will continue to seek applicants for that board, and I'm just gonna read you guys an excerpt about the youth commission that staff is looking forward to, starting on the county. So, staff attended the annual NCAA conference in Cabarrus County the week of August 11th. At the conference, some attendees participated in a class with Cabarrus County staff discussing their partnership with the local school district to construct a local youth commission. Keeping McDowell County in mind, during the duration of this presentation, staff later discussed the possibility of getting a youth commission started back home. Staff members later met with Cooperative Extensions Youth Development Coordinator Chad Ray to discuss onboarding the youth commission program. Utilizing materials given to us from Cabarrus County, the staff started constructing the McDowell County Youth Commission to tailor it to our county's needs. This program will have high school student participation from McDowell High School, McDowell Virtual Academy, McDowell Early College, McDowell Academy for Innovation, New Manic Christian School, Nevo Crossing Academy, and local homeschooling programs. The intention of this program is to get youth involvement with local government for further understanding of how our county functions on a day-to-day basis, and inspire young people to pursue careers in local government, all while learning various skills such as leadership, communication, governmental proceedings, and more. In cooperation with Chad Ray, the staff's next steps will be to contact the local schools listed above to pursue partnership and to get a point of contact for the youth commission program. Once staff has this point of contact, there will be a meeting with the schools and McDowell County government to discuss expectations of the youth commission program.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
Sounds good.
Are you okay to endorse it?
I'll make a motion to endorse the excellent program that we look forward to having here in McDowell County, and having young people more involved in government. I think it's great, Mr. Chairman.
My second.
Got a motion in second to endorse. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I had the opportunity of having lunch with the representative from Canaples Buram High School, a great young man, it was just good, having a good conversation, lots of questions, a lot of good conversation, so, it's a great program.
That's our future government.
That's right.
So, we certainly appreciate that. All right, next on the agenda is, send us some comments, if there's anyone that has signed up.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, was there any others that signed up?
No.
Okay. Is the commissioner's staff, commissioners and staff, of course, would we have, Debbie?
Just real, I'm sorry, really quick, it's a quick turnaround related to that grant you approved earlier, we do have, and I know it's Wednesday night, but it's tough sometimes to get things scheduled, 5:30 this week at the Recreation Center Gym, we're going to have a meeting, which is kind of scheduled today, it's a little last minute, apologize for that, but this is related to the playground picnic shelter grant, we need to have a public meeting, and so we will have an opportunity for public to come and comment on, on that, as well as board to be there in support, but it'll be at the Recreation Center Gym Wednesday 5:30.
I would like to just bring up, if we could get a, the unbudgeted park funds, that just updated list, if we can get that at least monthly, and then also, sales tax, what was discussed last month, I know you were telling me you get a timeline of coming into that and get that, when is that gonna start, when you're gonna present that in this meeting?
We will, we got a report today on where we ended up for the prior fiscal year, so I can report on how that, how that looked, and relay it into what it is for the purpose here.
Perfect.
We'll do that next month.
Perfect. Last thing, I just want to go on record, with 415 students in McDowell County schools and McKinney-Bento program, and about 120 cases with DSS, I know we discussed last month about the state is wanting us to look into expanding our animal building, and I am, I am not interested in, in putting monies in that, I want to give value to the children of this county above animals in this county, and I, this one, if you're bound against it.
Any other commissioners have anything?
Check, I'd like a Operation Green Light, something I believe I spoke to you about, it's an honor veteran, so I'm gonna work with our VSO to get that resolution together for McDowell County, I have a copy for Davidson County, but just wanted to adapt it to McDowell, so, hoping to have that next month.
Make sure to adjourn. Okay, we sent the motion. We sent. Motion going to close session?
Yes.
For our personnel matter.
It's, Virginia General Statute 143-318.11A, 3 and 6.
Incorporated motion.
Make sure I have that the next, next board meeting. Okay, so we are declared in close session, just one time. I hear a motion coming up close here.
Second.
Motion second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Got a here, a motion adjourned.
So many, thank you.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.